Absolutely absurd.
Sorry?
It is absolutely absurd, a dollar a square foot. That is absolutely absurd. I just can't even.
I, they, okay, that's good. You said we're gonna do it one line at a time. I've got a little bit of a problem, and I told you earlier, the location of that. What if you've got somebody renting that for a wedding, and you have tasteful occasions zipping back and forth and around and through while there? I'd be pissed, I'd be upset if, you know, I had four or five people going to get garlic pepper and garlic salt and hauling out a... We've seen what kind of, what the big...
Trays.
Red trays and everything. I, I, I wish there was some way, other way we could... You know, if we want to continue to use that room without getting... Okay, here's a suggestion, too. Can we put in addition to that room? This was something that somebody suggested. Could we put up a wire line across those beams? And put a curtain or some type of, uh... So that that whole area back there is not visible when you're renting the auditorium.
Well, you'd have to, I guess I could come in on the bathroom side and out through the bathroom door?
Yeah.
Get to there? So you're gonna put that up across where, 'cause it's someone...
Well, they'd still have to get into the bathroom, but that little area there, if that's open, the people can go back. And there's a curtain that goes to there or something. That's a lot better.
They'd still have somebody coming out of the bathroom door to go get trays and stuff.
Well, that's a lot better than taking the whole length of the, the floor to be getting stuff.
What, did they indicate what this storage would be for?
Their trays and...
Trays and, yeah.
Alright, so just...
Everything they're pulling out of the storage areas.
Stuff that they're already gonna have in the kitchen and use it.
And you don't want to use the closet that's there now because of the HVAC stuff, correct?
The closet in the hallway? There's no way to get...
No, no, the closet, no, the closet is in the auditorium.
They should be using half of, they're using the whole thing.
You know which one I mean?
Yeah, but the HVAC is not... But I thought, somebody told me the HVAC was in the area.
That's why we didn't put any of that.
We need maintenance of the plumbing, that's to the back of bathrooms there.
They're using it now.
Plus, we have no area for our storage, for when renters come in, that they have the ability to get to any kind of cleaning supplies. We have no storage of our tables and our chairs. Understanding that we're not gonna get all the tables and chairs in that closet, but the, the goal was to move some of those things into that closet. Provide an area for renters to be able to utilize cleaning supplies, uh, the slop setting, something. Which they have no access to now.
Well, can that be built, where you were gonna build that room for tasteful occasions? Can that be built for us to put the tables and chairs and other sundry items?
They'd still have to go to the closet then.
It can, but we still need...
And then tasteful occasions would have that whole closet, which they're using now and not filling up.
But then that defeats, that doesn't allow you to have an area for your renters to...
Plus, they still have to, would have to walk out and go into that closet.
Well, it's not as far.
Yeah, I think you're, you know, you still got somebody in the chef's hat walking out in the middle of the wedding, that was your complaint, and that's, I kind of agree with you for the most part.
Yeah.
If you're, if you have storage out in the middle of the auditorium, people walking back and forth is, you know... Although, that's never seemed to have been a huge problem in the past. I guess, well, I mean, you know, the, the alternatives are to give them a room upstairs, which is not really a good idea, because then they have to use the elevator to come up and down and do all that stuff. Up and down, and that's gonna put a lot of wear and tear on the elevator. The other option would be to give them a room downstairs, but you would have to swap something out with the senior center in order to give them a room for storage downstairs.
They're already using room 106 and not paying for it.
106 or 201?
106 is the, um, cooler room, right?
105 is.
106 is a closet?
Straight across from there.
Oh, that closet? Yeah, they wouldn't be using that anymore.
They could use more than...
Why are you building something for them? Why don't they use 106?
It's a very small area, that wouldn't be enough. Plus, you'd have to get, you have to wait to wheel trays in and out. I don't think that's... I don't think it's wide, uh, walkways wide enough.
I have a dumb question. In September, Dennis brought to my attention that we voted to give them one year of lease at nineteen hundred dollars.
We didn't get there yet.
We're not, we're not number one. That's number two. Yes, he's true. He's right.
Yeah, we, yeah, we voted to give, and we did. And this, and, but it's a negotiation process. We gave them the lease, they rejected it, and they're coming back with this, and now we have to talk about it again. Whether we want to or not. I mean, my preference would be to give them a room downstairs, somewhere where they would have access to, that they wouldn't have to go through.
Okay, doesn't the senior center want 201?
Yes.
Would they be willing to trade one of their rooms downstairs for 201? Maybe.
Well...
And keep 203?
I mean, I haven't been in some of those rooms down there, so I don't, I know they won't give up the first room with the pool table. And we wouldn't want them to, 'cause we can't move it.
I don't, I'm not sure what other room they would want to give up, because it would be set up.
I don't, I don't.
There's a lot of rooms.
I know they have the sewing.
The only one would be the first one inside the door that would be the best fit.
Who owns all the barbecue pits in room 201?
Tasteful occasions. Any other items?
That's another room that they're using, not on their lease.
Well, they could move that downstairs. I mean, that's, I, I just think all that would fit in that room they're using now. And build a room for our tables and chairs in the back. That doesn't disturb, once they're having up, we can put the stage in here.
Whatever if it is a closet.
They're using it now, Free.
Biggest thing with that closet is how you'd be able to get to the plumbing underneath. And right now, that is a pain in the butt, and all their stuff's in there. I, I like them, but I...
Oh, there's...
That is a pain.
What is there, a patch?
There's a wall face there, you get down, and it is a pain in the butt.
Then that's, that's not an option.
That's why we need that closet to...
So the two, I think the two options then would be to give them a room downstairs for storage, or to, or to build them a room downstairs for storage.
You don't wanna make that community center any smaller, that space out there of what it is.
I'm sorry, again?
The room itself. You're, you're talking about building the room, you know, you don't wanna make that...
Well, we're back in that, that corner.
It's where the tables and chairs are now.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, though, you just don't wanna make something smaller than what it is, 'cause I'm sure if you build a room there, then either volleyball or pickleball is gonna complain and don't want enough room to play pickleball or volleyball.
Not, no, not really. They would much rather have that stuff out of there that's in there now. They'd rather have the tables and chairs someplace else.
Well, yeah, they're gonna have a wall there with the room.
It doesn't matter, but a tip pickleball will bounce off that wall, and they don't have to crawl under it, or when they're going back to get a ball, fall into the tables and chairs and the wood and everything that's there. 'Cause somebody's gonna get hurt, I'm telling you. Well, they already have.
Description one is missing, room 105 description. It only states kitchen on the first floor, second floor office, and storage area is it. 105 needs to be put in on the third line for description. And I'm asking that it be, list the rooms as the room number, what that room is, the square footage of the room, and its intended use. Right now, it's just a room number and the square footage. Everybody's always confused, well, what is that room? I don't know what that room is. What do they have? Nobody ever knows.
Is this any room? Is this client room?
Exactly.
I will tell you, the easiest thing to do, get a floor plan and color in the rooms that they have. I mean, that's how we do commercial, I do commercial leases. Actually get a floor plan, and we block out the rooms that are part of it.
Yeah.
That way, there's no question about anything up there, the number, you just know where it's on the plan.
Kind of like that?
Yeah, well, I see there was a floor plan.
Yeah.
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 So we, so we already have that.
So do we go to the senior center and see if they can swap something out, or no?
It ain't gonna be the first room on the right, I guarantee you, because we just redid all that for them and put a lot of money into it with carpet. We took apart the pool table, moved it out, paid a company to put it back in. How much was that? Eight hundred dollars? More? And I don't know, can we put it on the second story? We could put it in 201 upstairs.
What?
The pool, it, the pool table, would the floor hold it? That's solid.
Alright, so then it sounds like basically the square footage in the auditorium is the only option, so discussion on that.
Then build them the closet.
I would entertain, we have twenty-eight points to go through, and it's approaching ten PM. That, just like the senior center lease, that we extend this three months as it is and revisit this.
We can't extend it three months?
Why not?
They're not gonna accept that. They, we, we, you'll be right in the middle of their wedding season at that point. You could either extend it for a year as it is now, or we can, we can get through it.
You think they'll care? They're gonna be paying less.
It's in their, it's in their wedding period, you just said it.
They have to figure out what they're doing for this year for their business. They can't figure out in March, when you start getting into the wedding season, what they're gonna do for their business. They've asked, the, I think, the term of the lease is the next item, and they've asked for two years for that with, with a, uh, sixty day, or a six month, basically a six month, uh, notice.
Seven.
Well, seven, and then they have to respond within thirty, so it's basically six months.
And I asked for a meeting last month when I found out the lease before this one, that I don't think anybody's probably seen, because this is the, the third one I've seen. You know, to take care of it then, and, and here we are now, and, and I just don't see this happening. There's a lot to go through here.
Well, I guess the only thing I can say is that the community center is, I mean, as Andy said many times, it's a money bill. I mean, we're not, we're, we don't make money on the senior center. We take money out of the general fund and out of the taxpayers' pockets to pay for the community.
For decisions like this.
Last month's...
For decisions like this. That's why.
Last month we saved one off of community center.
Right.
Well...
You put twenty thousand in from the general fund last year, plus, twenty thousand plus. It costs forty to fifty thousand a year.
Yeah. And, and with...
In excess to, to run that. And with decisions like this, that's why you're taking so much money out of the general fund to put on over there. Because it's, 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 this is poor decisions.
I mean, this, this basically puts twenty thousand dollars in, in new freedoms coffers to help pay for the senior, for the senior center and the community center and give rent to home and, I mean, um... I mean, I would, I mean, I understand that, that you might not like the terms of this lease, but you actually have to figure out, are we making money? And we are. And are there any other comps that you could show that would say that we should, they should be paying more?
I don't see how you can say that we are making money. Absol- absolutely not.
So, so on the flip side, if, if we don't do this and they go somewhere else, then we're left even further in the hole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
By, by, by twenty thousand dollars.
Well, that was one of the decided to go for just a year lease.
Is there anybody knocking on the door to rent that kitchen out?
Again, because nobody has ever put it out there.
May I ask a question? How many times was it rented out in the past year of 2022? How many times was the kitchen rented?
Only a few that actually, that actually paid for the kitchen.
Oh, yeah.
You wanna hear how bad this is?
How, how many times, Heather?
Only a few.
A few, well, we had three this month, right? I think they all, on the financial, you know, said with kitchen, with kitchen, with kitchen.
Is very, is very rare. But what we're learning from tasteful occasions is apparently when someone is renting and not paying for the kitchen, whether it's cooking or no cooking, there's different fees, it was different fees. That they were utilizing the kitchen even when not paying, so, yeah, but there might be...
How'd they get in?
They liked them.
Oh, they liked them?
Yeah, they said, can we put some stuff in your refrigerator? And they would like them. They're nice, they don't, they just don't say no.
Well, that was part of the agreement, I think, back when they put in the, the cooler.
I could rent the community center for the weekend, Friday to Sunday, and pay what tasteful occasions pays in one month.
Rented to whom?
What do you mean who?
Anybody, but it's six hundred...
Well, you just said you could rent it for the weekend.
If I, if I were to rent it for the weekend and pay for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, that's equivalent to what tasteful occasions pays for the whole month.
Renting the kitchen is like a hundred bucks, isn't it? Hundred, hundred and fifty?
It was a hundred dollars.
So it's a hundred dollars, so how does that equate, how does we're renting it three times?
Not a, not a commercial-grade kitchen on the market. Absolutely not.
You know, you keep saying that, but you don't show me any data. So, I mean, if you're gonna keep saying that, you really need to hand me something.
You keep showing commercial buildings as just a slab and four walls. That doesn't even equate anywhere close to the perks of this.
It's at forty-five cents a square foot.
Didn't you say there was a, there was a catering business? Isn't that what the first one you said?
Wikis, the old wikis up in York.
Isn't that a catering?
And that's a fifty-six cents a square foot, and that is outfitted with a full kitchen and two dishwashers and, you know, and that's probably where they're gonna end up going if we don't take them.
Andy, what was that annual square footage cost on that one you just said?
On what? The wiki thing?
Yeah.
Uh, well, it's a huge building. Most, most of it's actually, I mean, I don't even know what they would do with it all, but it's, it's actually thirty-five hundred dollars a month. It's fifty-six cents a square foot per month, but then they also have to pay utilities, tax, maintenance, and insurance. So if you figure it on a square footage basis with the fifty-six cents a square foot, and you figure that utilities, taxes, and maintenance and whatnot is probably, you know, another four, you know, forty-four dol, forty-four cents a square foot, it puts you up to the dollar. So I'm just trying to get a feel for where we should be. So, I mean, I've talked to Eric Paulus, I've talked to, you know, other people, and this is where they are. So, I, I mean, I don't...
I mean, for reference in New Freedom, I spoke to Dennis, and he was gonna rent the hotel, just the first floor with the kitchen and the whole entire restaurant plus the outside for like thirty-three hundred a month. But that was an entire restaurant with a bar.
And, and they don't, they don't have a dining room.
They don't have a liquor license anymore. So you can have a bar with no liquor license.
Well, you, I mean, there's loopholes, but I'm just giving you a reference in our...
And do we know, if they leave, how much will our expenses go down? If tasteful occasions leaves, how much will the utilities, um, go down a month? Or our expenses?
Probably, probably in the neighborhood of, I'd say about two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars, because you'd still have to heat it, right?
But you said the three ninety barely covered the utilities.
I'm sorry?
You said the three ninety that we've been getting for I don't know how many years now barely covered the utilities.
But we would still have to heat it. You can't just, like, close it off and...
Well, you say it's two hundred, but the three ninety barely covered utilities, so I think utilities are definitely more than what you just quoted now, two something.
I was telling you that, what, the gas and the electric and the fryers and the, I mean, you could unplug the refrigerators and prop them up, and, you know, so you wouldn't have that expense. But overall, you would, you'd probably be saving about two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars. That's the, the cost of running the oven and the fryers and the refrigerators.
You, you said a year?
So then, so then the residents are on freight and revenue, the extra sixteen hundred, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm saying that we're, we make about sixteen hundred. Do we actually make sixteen hundred? No, 'cause we're still heating the space.
But they would be putting that into the pool. If they leave, I'm going to be putting that into the pool.
Yes.
How much have you been putting into the pool for the past ten years?
Whatever, more than what they've been paying. But that's what I'm saying. They're going from whatever they paid for the last two years up to nineteen hundred.
So if we've only been getting three ninety a month, is it really that bad?
But now we're gonna be in nineteen hundred, isn't that the price you're, you're saying?
I, I don't know what they're gonna be getting. I don't, I don't know.
So anything over the three ninety goes into the pool.
For what it's worth, I mean, you don't even have a basic term that you'd agree to, 'cause you don't know what to lose. I'm not sure how you're gonna work through any other terms in this. You don't even know what you want these terms.
Needs to be tackled.
And the term, I mean, the term of the lease is also, I mean, you, you were... There are a lot of other terms here that are really not that important, to be honest, because they're boilerplate, for the most part, from commercial leases.
It, well, it's five percent cap. I mean, who, whose idea was the five percent cap?
That's what they're asking.
That's what, so tasteful occasions wrote this lease, and now it's, I thought I was being pumped or something, so they really did write this lease.
Those, these are the changes they asked for. When you rent someplace, you, you don't think there should be a cap of what you can, you know, I mean...
Five percent? So at, at the end of two years...
I mean, even, even Eric Paulus uses CPI, which he said this year was, he didn't even use the full CPI, 'cause the CPI was eight percent. So five percent is actually a reasonable number.
When we are in the recession and the increase of costs, to lock yourself in and tie your hands behind your back for at the end of two years to get a ninety-five dollar increase. Then two years more is a ninety-nine dollar, and by the end of seven years, they're barely paying two hundred and ninety-nine dollars more, and that's it.
You're, you're making the assumption that you're going to continue the same lease every year. You're not.
Exactly, because maybe you're gonna turn it into a five-year lease, so every five years we can raise it by five percent.
What are you even talking about?
What are we here talking about? Right here, it says the rent for renewal terms. So be subject to negotiation and mutual agreement between the parties here and to. However, in no case, which means never, shall the rent be increased by more than five percent during any renewal term.
Yeah, and I have that highlighted, and I'm striking it.
Nobody's talked about striking it.
Well, we did not get to there yet.
It is, you, you should have stroked it before you even got it to us and said, that's just like a no-go. I mean, nothing is...
Well, it's not a no-go, because the council has to make the decision.
True, he shouldn't, he should have stroked it. I apologize for that, but it, it's just... It's aggravating. It's, it's just, and to two ye, the council passed one year, not two years. The council vote was for one year.
I understand that, but they're asking for two, 'cause they don't want to, they don't want to have to go through this every year.
Well, all this does is just circumvents having the commercial independent realtor come in to assess. All they did, that just, that just makes that, and, you know, it's not, it's not gonna happen now, because now you're locking it in. You say it's being removed. I've been, you know, seeing it there since I picked up my package, so...
Okay, they were on two years prior to this, every year they, whenever they were there, am I correct? It's always been a two-year lease, so I can see they don't wanna give up that two-year lease period. Whether anybody agrees with it, I understand their thinking.
The other option is just to fix in an increase per year. So a lot of commercial leases I work on, you have an increase of three percent per year, so that they can, they can figure it in, but you have to get to a starting point where you're happy with. And it's usually based on fair market rental value for the property at the outset, and then they figure in a fixed rate increase. So over time, your tenant knows what's common, your landlord knows what's common, and guess, it's gonna be off some years and not others, but that's what they do.
That would be possibility.
So, so you're saying three percent, not five percent?
Well, per year, though, but that's what I'm saying.
Well, this is, this would be six percent over the term of the lease.
Five, five percent is not unreasonable as an increase in one year.
I agree.
Well, this is two years, though. But how can we even get anywhere on this lease when you don't even know where, where they're gonna be in there? What rooms are they gonna have?
I think that's a fair statement, if you don't know the basics.
And, and you as a solicitor, there is no force majeure in this. Would you ever do a lease and not have that in yours? Is it in here and I missed it?
I don't know that we do force majeure leases, usually it's a service agreement, but we can put it in.
Tell us what it is.
It means you can't, you can't perform because of impossibility. So basically, there's a riot, there's a war, there's a pandemic, there's...
Well, you have, you have, you have insurance.
Do one year at a time to see what, what the future brings.
Well, they wanted...
Do you really wanna hang yourself out there for two years or three years?
That's what we gave them, and they said that we want two years.
Because, you know, don't forget, we're having a problem right now.
I guess, you have to give them some reason.
We don't know even if they're gonna be in business net, you know, within, you know...
But if, if you have to give them any year if they're not in business, then we can everything back.
One year at a time, why does it have to be two years?
Well, they asked for it.
Because they asked for it.
Yeah, it's all you're asking.
Let's, let's bargain with them a little bit, you know, we have to...
That's what we're doing. That's what we're trying to get to. I guess the question, I would guess I'd ask the question to council is, how do you wanna see this negotiation go? Because, I mean, you don't have anything to bring back between meetings. So if you guys make a change here, it goes back to them, we don't look at it for another month. This could go on forever. So I think you have to figure out a way to have some sort of interim...
Well, I, I don't, I don't think they're gonna do that. I think they gave us this, they want something back from us saying what we will agree to, and I think then they're gonna make a decision on what they do.
But you don't even have the accurate square footage. I'm pretty confident here, you do not have the accurate square footage. You don't know where the extra storage space is coming from. If you don't even know that...
I think we've just decided it's going to be in the auditorium, and it's gonna be blocked off and be three hundred. Because we said that the senior center's not gonna give up a room, and they can't want, we don't wanna do it upstairs. Jake said we can't do it with the closet, 'cause he's gotta get the plumbing, so I think that leaves us with putting the storage area in the auditorium.
No, I'm just saying, all I said, though, is they're not gonna give up, up that first room. I don't know what's in the second.
Well, those are all set up for pottery and card room and the library. You know, so I don't...
And the solicitor says, how can you move forward when you don't even know what rooms and square footage that you're dealing with?
Why, I, I, Dave, why, we have the rooms.
Well, if, if you guys are comfortable with those being the rooms and that being the square footage, then you, you're there, right?
It's wrong.
But you have one member that's saying it's wrong, so that's all I'm saying is...
You, you have six hundred and sixty square feet for that kitchen. It measured out to approximately seven hundred and twenty-eight feet.
Well, how about you just identify it as the kitchen?
But you're charging them on square footage. That's how you're coming up with the red price.
Well, and that's the other issue, is you don't agree on rent. You gotta fix one of, I mean, you gotta fix them both, instead of where this is where we're starting for rent, and this is how much we're gonna spend. Those are the two terms you're leasing.
I, yeah, well, I guess one place to start would be, what type of lease is this? Is this a gross, a net, a triple net, a single net? I heard you talk about CAM, I heard you say it's not a true triple net, 'cause we're subsidized. What is, what type of lease is this?
Does it matter? It says, it's what it says it is.
But that's how you, how do you figure it out? How do you know what goes into the figure if you don't know what type of standard lease that you're...
So I have, it doesn't have to be a standard lease. I have landlords that say, I want X number of dollars for this space, and that's what they take. And then they work from there. And the question is, is does, you know, does the borough want to pay for utilities or not pay for utilities? Is the, you know, does the town wanna pay for utilities? I mean, we're gonna pay for, this has us paying for everything, so it's a, it's a pure lease rate, and you're right, you have to back all those numbers out. But if you're not comfortable with where you get to, we don't have a story. And it sounds like you're not, Erica.
Absolutely not.
And it sounds like maybe other borough council members are, so that's what you have to decide.
Yeah, I, I... Where do you think we should be, Erica, price-wise? Based on, should we charge, if it's twenty-two sixty square feet, do you think we should be charging them a dollar a square foot? Twenty-two hundred and sixty dollars a month? Is that where your thoughts are?
I am not a professional broker. I don't know. But I do know that it's nowhere close to what it is, talking about fifty-four cents and a dollar and so forth. I know that for sure, and I know that we've been...
I mean, seriously, how do you know that?
Because that's just, from, from what I've looked... Because that's just, from, from what I looked up online, and I talked to the broker, Ann Shuesberry, over there by the commons. She was talking twelve to seventeen dollars a square foot.
Annual or monthly?
For, um, kitchen, commercial kitchen.
Yeah, but is that for an annual term or for, for a monthly term?
That was the triple net, and so that was the, the reason, and then you add on to that.
We're not, we're not going triple net. That's not, that's not happening. The, uh, the square, the square footage, if you use... Now, you're basically at a dollar a square foot. If you're at twelve thousand dollars.
Why would they leave? Why would they leave? They are not going to get a dollar a square foot anywhere for what they do. And, and I, I just want to make perfectly clear.
You want them to leave?
It's not, that's what I'm, it, pay perfectly clear. It's not about them. We talk about them because that's who's there. But it's really not about them. It's about the space and the value of that space. It doesn't, put anybody in there. Put anybody in there that does what they do, you know, whatever it is, you know, Dan's donuts. I don't care what it is. It is about the space that's there, what it costs, outlay to us to keep it going. And, and these leases that are drawn up like this, that keeps us in a deficit all the time with just unfettered use. Right, right now, they are using the auditorium. They're not supposed to be in there, have their stuff stored in there. They're in room one oh six. That's not on their lease. They've got half of that.
What does it matter what they're doing now? Let's look at what we can fix.
Because I have, because, because, exactly. What they're doing now is what they're going to do then, and nobody's going to say anything about it then either. They're just going to, don't you even give me that. Don't even. I don't even do that.
I'm sorry, I'm tired. I've been moving up since midnight. I'm supposed to get up in three hours. This is getting ridiculous.
I went up since 2:00 AM. Thank you very much. We all have long days and maybe you're whatever there, but, um... It, it could, it could be anything. It's, it's about...
If they're not there, then nobody's there.
For three ninety, so for three ninety.
Hold on a second. I'm going to make a motion. My motion is that we approve this lease at nineteen hundred dollars. We add in the, we use the square footage here, which is within forty-four square feet of Erica's numbers, if she measured the same way I did.
No, it's eighty-seven.
Approximately three-hundred-and-sixty square feet in the storage area in the auditorium. The term of the lease, I agree. Well, the motion is that we use two years as the term of the lease. I think that we go ahead and the motion is that we provide written notice of seven months prior to the end of the lease if we're going to, if we're going to not renew the lease. We strike out the, any renewal term, which it starts out in the sentence that's out. However, in no case shall the rent increase more than five percent in any renewal term. We just, that just goes away.
How about you just get rid of renewal term? If that's a sticking point, just don't do a renewal term. Do a two-year lease. And then you come back and review this.
Well, but effectively, I just did by taking that out. It's, you know, renewal terms, basically, it'll say, renewal terms shall be subject to the terms and conditions set forth in this lease, with the exception of rent, which shall be subject to negotiation and mutual agreement by both parties. So basically, there is no rent renewal.
You just take out the rest.
Yeah.
I would just take out everything after a lease agreement. So it's a two-year term, it's a two-year lease, and you do this all over again in a year.
In two years. Well, yeah. You should start a year, 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 several months. So where are you taking out from, renewal terms?
I would just say after, just leave the first sentence thereafter lesson. Just make it a two-year lease.
Right.
And then we have to all come back to the table, do renewal of the lease. And that'll give you time to do some of this homework on what the real fair market value of the property is.
You got the...
And then they're, they're stopped for, they're, they're good for two years.
Beginning thereafter?
Yeah.
So everything from thereafter, after that, it's first?
Yeah, just make it that simple. It's a two-year lease, period.
Yeah, two-year lease period. And I would strike under five. Set rate will be waived for two uses of the community center auditorium per year. You're striking, striking, okay.
Second sentence of three would come up, or second to three.
Of three, right, yeah.
Because it's going to go.
Utilities and taxes are probably okay. Uh, it says in ten, given a key to each of the kitchens. I'm not sure they need a key to each of the kitchens. They just need a ki, a key to their kitchen. Well, are we still going to be allowing someone else to use their kitchen? And they go upstairs to the lion's kitchen? I'll call it the lion's kitchen, so the lion's room. We are not going to allow people to use the kitchen, is what you're saying?
Yeah, last two sentences of three.
Last two sentences of three?
Yeah.
There's no renewal. All right, that's the last thing to talk about then, is use of the kitchen by other, other parties. I don't know where I stand on that. If they have a problem with that, why don't we just let people use the kitchen upstairs? Or if you have a problem with that for some reason that it's...
You mean, you mean let renters use the kitchen upstairs?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that.
I mean, honestly, if I was Tasteful Occasions and somebody's kicking me out of my own kitchen, I guess I'd be a little...
That's their stance, yeah.
Yeah, I have to agree there. So, but we do have the kitchen upstairs. And if people put tables with crock pots and this and that, and want to put a griddle on the table and cook wieners and hot, and hamburgers, then yeah. Well, and Tasteful, I mean, you have to realize, I mean, Tasteful Occasions pretty much takes care of S Y C, the senior center. That, you know, they work with all those people. They provide a senior meal every year. They work with the rec, rec to do the veterans' food. And so they're going to still continue, I mean, they work with the Lions Club and they donated, I believe, twenty-five percent of profits back to the Lions Club for the... That was for the fire company. For the fire, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry, yeah, the bingo. You know, so I mean, it's not like they're not willing to work with nonprofits and with other people.
I see nothing addressed, address the use of tables and chairs.
Uh, it says they're not allowed to touch any, remove anything from the community center, anything that belong, doesn't belong to them. So that would be tables, chairs, anything else that we have in there?
So they can pull it out and use it there?
No. Well, they have to, if they rent the auditorium, sure.
Sure, yeah, sure, they rent the auditorium. But if they don't rent the auditorium, there's nothing in that sentence.
Yes, it does. It says they can't or...
Or does it say that they can't use it when they're there?
Well, where would they, where would they set the tables up? You're saying that they would use them?
They're putting stuff on our tables in the auditorium all the time.
That's because they're sitting out, our tables sit out all the time. If we put them away, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't use them.
Maybe they're taking them out and putting them up. I don't know, but I see them in use.
Aren't they going to be in the locked closet you're building?
Yeah, yeah.
And the key fob system will prevent all of that, correct?
That's true, yeah.
Andrew says it won't all fit in there.
Oh.
Tables will, chairs will.
I think the chairs are an issue, it's the tables, because we end up with those having schmutz on it.
Language about the kitchen.
Sorry?
Where's the kitchen language about the kitchen?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah? Language about the kitchen must be used.
Andy helped me out.
I'm sorry.
They're saying, "Where's the language about the kitchen?"
Where's the language about the bed for it? About the kitchen and...
It's at the end of ten is the extra key.
Yes, that, that's what you were talking about there.
You know, but where does it say that they have, well, it says...
Well, from number five, the use words of the stoves, refrigerator, dishwasher, the stuff they use there, that was all removed. Why, why isn't that in there, the equipment? That was removed. Why shouldn't they keep the leased property and the equipment in as good working order and repair as it was on this date? I'm sorry, it was on the last one. That was the le, lease from November. Now it's number eight. I'm sorry. Is force majeure going in this?
What do you foresee as the force majeure?
Well...
Like, what, how would we not be able to perform if there was a tornado? I mean, they wouldn't be there either because if it's a disaster, they could. If you want to...
Well, I think it protects both of us by going both ways in different situations. And generally, my understanding is leases, not that.
I mean, I can give you a twenty-seven-page commercial lease if you want. And that'll address condemnation and will address all those things. I can certainly do that. We just tried to come up with one that was fairly comprehensive.
That's what I was going to ask. Did you prepare this lease?
Prepared, basically, yeah. It was modified, but that's okay.
And something, like it just says nineteen hundred, there needs to be like a table in here that says how you got to that. You know, you spelled it out in September meeting, X mile dollars for this, X mile, but just, you see the nineteen hundred, what's it for?
I've never seen that in any of our...
We're not going to rent that in.
Not for the...
Any property that's... How does that change what they're paying?
It doesn't change, but it lets the person know, people that look at it know how, how they get to the nineteen hundred. What, what is it comprised of?
And just to clarify, I didn't say, "We do it." I just said, "I've never seen it."
No, no, he says, "We're not going to do that."
No, we're not going to do that. I don't think, I think you leave yourself wide open. And what, are they allowed to challenge each thing that you've set? I mean, they're asking.
Who's challenged?
I'm sorry?
Who's, who's challenged?
Well, Tasteful Occasions. Can they say, "Oh, you, you misstated this. I figured out that it's this much"?
Well, I can see they asked for free space and I see that you gave them that.
Gave them what?
Free space, storage area. Their, their rent was nineteen hundred in September. It's nineteen hundred now. But they're still getting three-hundred-and-sixty, uh, square feet added on to it in addition to the other ones being, so they're not, they're being given free space.
Well, it's not, they're not being given free space. They, we reduced the price of the per square foot cost to cover, to cover the, the space because it was already heated area.
And how, how does anybody know that? Because there's no table to say how much the square footage is. So how much is the square footage now for Tasteful Occasions?
Twenty-two sixty. Plus or minus forty-four square feet.
No, how much per square foot, dollar amount? You said you changed?
No, I divided it's eighty-four, it's eighty-four cents. But I'm not sure, I mean, anybody would take...
Eighty-four cents.
Any, anybody would take the nineteen hundred divided by twenty-two sixty to get that. I don't think it'd be a table.
Because in that nineteen hundred, there's a, what, a hundred-and-twenty for the walk-in freezer? There's some in there for the replacement of the equipment. There's some in there. There's all this stuff.
I do not want to give a, a tenant how we came up with the price. I think the price is fair. I think that what we came up with in the analysis is fair. I think comparing it to what other people in the community gave us for prices, those were comps, and I think that we, I think our lease is a reasonable price.
Well, the senior center...
You're going, I'm sorry?
The senior center in their lease says they have no auditorium, no gym use. Why doesn't it say that in the Tasteful Occasions lease?
Well, it does now. It took away the, we took it out. We took the free, the two free out.
No, they have no use. Like, they can't go in there and, you know, walk around or do whatever, whatever they do, right? The senior center, they just can't, why isn't that in their lease that they can't have use, like, they store things and they keep things and all that?
Actually, it does say that.
Where at?
You have to help me out, Ian. But then, all they're allowed to do in the, in the, uh, community center proper, the auditorium, is cross it to get to the garage door to load their trucks.
This section shall not apply to, uh, U N B. That's where the na, that's where the word auditorium, because you say the foyer's lobbies, entrances, hallways, stairways, and store spaces, not included in the lease of the community center, shall not be obstructed or used for any purpose other than ingress and egress from the leased property.
Yep, that's from five, Ken.
Why isn't the auditorium listed in there? Like it is for the senior center.
It's not in here.
Well, I know neither is the senior center, but it's in their lease that they, they don't have use of it.
That's because they were using it without permission.
So it's Tasteful Occasions, they're using it without permission. I just see a real double standard between how the senior center lease is written and how this one is written.
You can absolutely do that because one's a nonprofit and one's a for-profit, for what it's worth.
So you let the for-profit take advantage in the...
That's not, the senior center's paying half the price. What's their, how, how are you taking advantage of them?
What's their rent? What are we saying the senior center's renting?
You're letting the for-profit business take advantage of using that community center and not having in their lease. But the, but the, uh, nonprofit business, you're making sure you have it in the lease so they can't step in there. That's what I'm saying.
And for what it's worth, paragraph eighteen is a modified force majeure. This isn't called a force majeure.
Yeah.
What, obstruction of privacy?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we can't provide, yeah, exactly.
And it talks about, "We often make repairs for governmental regulations, kind of restricts some of the available materials."
I have a question.
Yeah.
As Dave and Dennis pointed out, you approved this lease in September. You're just supposed to be now talking about the provisions that they gave you.
Right, yeah.
Why are we still talking about the bottom line of things?
Because there are twenty-eight sections in this lease, and in the last lease that we approved, there was nineteen.
But our solicitor prepared this, correct?
Yes, all the changes were done to bring it up to legal standards.
So now we're questioning his ability?
You directed Andrew to do the lease, not Dave.
You made the changes, right?
I reviewed it, July. You should launch the changes to Andy, yeah.
So we're questioning our solicitor's abilities?
I guess you are, I don't know.
Do I not?
All right, here we go. So I'm making a motion that we approve the lease with the, with the following changes.
Sorry? Oh, we already had the motions.
Sorry, with the changes. Well, but we need the changes, right?
Well, he started with them.
It started with them.
The original motion has to be amended, right? I thought he started with those changes.
Didn't he say, "Motion to approve the lease," and then follow? Right. Thought that's how. I was making a new motion, basically.
But that, that, that motion has to be withdrawn.
That's true.
Who seconded it, within?
It was Ryan and Dave.
So withdrawn.
Okay, so I'll, I'll withdraw, withdraw.
Okay, so the motion is we approve the current lease with the following changes.
Paragraph two, after the first sentence. Who's running the renewal term, who's leading?
Right, thereafter.
Yep. Paragraph three, we take out, we delete from the rent for the renewal terms and the last sentence, so there'll be no cap and there'll be no...
Are you taking the last two sentences out?
Last two sentences, yes. So there's no renewal guarantee. It'll be a new, a new lease. Took, under paragraph five, the last sentence is struck. All right, so there's no two free uses. The taxes and everything is okay, but hopefully we won't be faced with that.
Now adding the auditorium and eight B?
Eight B?
So that they don't have storage spaces there too, out in the open?
Well, you could add auditorium there. I don't think that really affects anything, because the only thing that they would be using the auditorium for is just to cross to the garage door to load a truck.
They keep their stuff stacked between the kitchen and that closet regularly?
I know, but that's going away.
I don't see, I don't hear where it's going away. It's not stated.
Because they're not allowed to use any spaces other than the ones that they're... Well, I'm sure that'll be policed, because you're gonna have people in there using it and they're gonna report it, because they don't like it.
So, you're putting auditorium in B?
Yeah, we could have the auditorium in B.
And are you putting A, A, the equipment? That they will shall upkeep the leased property and equipment?
Oh, we did talk about that. We pulled, we pulled that out.
And I noticed that...
I thought we put it in.
Why did it, why was it pulled out? Why should they upkeep the equipment?
I thought we put it in the last lease. Because it didn't say it, because I said, I brought that up, and equipment. I don't have any problem putting that back in, since they're using the kitchen 24/7 and no one else is touching it. The only reason I wanted it taken out before was because we had other people using the kitchen. So, you could say keep the leased property and equipment. It's good order. And repairs is the day of the lease, yeah.
You got that one?
Yep.
Okay.
And number 13, representatives was taken out of number 13.
Yes, that's because the borough office will be doing all inspections. There's no reason for anyone on council or the mayor to have a key to the kitchen.
I'm not asking for a key to the kitchen, the right of entry into there.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll reside with the borough office.
So, as a duly elected official, I do not have the right to go inside a borough-owned building?
If I'm, if I'm...
No, you can go in the building. Just their office and their lease premises. That's...
Called quiet enjoyment.
Yeah.
It's called quiet enjoyment under a lease. If the tenant is paying what they're supposed to pay, they have the right to quiet enjoyment of the property. If you want to reserve, I mean, the reserve to the tenant, landlords, to ascertain what lease less sees performing the covenants, remember, if borough council wants to give you that off for, they can do so, but you as an individual, borough council member doesn't have any other authority that someone's, a citizen of the public would have.
Right. Even a landlord doesn't have the right to...
To carry out my business to see if the square footage is accurate or anything.
Do you think the borough council actually, do you honestly think the square footage will change from year to year?
I don't know, but it hasn't been verified by the office.
We're talking, I mean, I'm just talking about the issue that a single borough council member has no further authority.
Not single.
Yes.
All of us. I'm talking, I'm the mayor?
Mary.
You're not single, you're married.
Oh.
It was a joke.
I thought I was the mayor, what?
I think it's up to the borough council if...
I'm not asking for me personally. We are representatives of the borough.
And if you want to go in, then you could go down and get Andrew and he, or Donnie, and he could take you up, because they're authorized representatives. Even if you're a landlord, you're not allowed to just walk into a lease, you know, somebody leases your...
I'm not saying I would do that, but I asked that and I was ignored.
I'm sorry, what?
I asked to go down with the borough office to remeasure, and I was dismissed.
Well, the borough office remeasured. I think, you know, like I said, we're within 44 square feet of the actual measurements. And that's actually 44 square feet, not a thing, so...
No. It was 80. I didn't, one of the rooms wasn't even measured, so...
What'd you get for the kitchen?
Have you completed the motion yet?
No. Yeah, I, that's... The motion, that is, that is the complete motion, right there. I think we've, we've added everything and taken out everything. So, that's the motion.
I'll turn it.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
I, I just think that not everything was addressed that, that I had raised. I had sent an email, had like six, 16 points of information that I went and addressed. It, it wasn't addressed. It was dismissed. I'd asked for emergency meeting last month. And this lease was decided without council involvement, to the best of my knowledge. I'm not...
Council has just been involved.
Well, yeah. And we were given this to, to look at after the fact, so...
You are an elected official. Your job is to make the final determination on matters that affect the borough.
That have already been decided.
Let me finish. The office's job is to present that information to the borough council. That is what was done here.
This subsidizes, continues, the citizens continue to subsidize this and...
I, I take severe umbrage with that. You know, you know, we have taken a lease. There was $790. We figured out what would be best for the borough. This more than doubles the cost of the lease for them. I mean, I think, I think, and it gives them a two-year lease. I think this is good for the borough. I think it's good for the citizens, and I think it's probably good, good enough for Tasteful Occasions. They may come back and say, "No."
I don't understand how you could vote to pass this tonight without knowing the correct information to calculate a market-based rate. I think this is reckless and it's not something, a legacy that I want to leave.
I have talked to numerous real estate agents and people that actually rent commercial spaces to come up with these comps. I, I believe that our price is fair, it's reasonable, and it's good for the people of New Freedom. We are adding virtually $20,000 to the community center coffers so that we can try to get out of the rent. That is my opinion. You're entitled to yours.
Yeah. And this is not clearly a benefit for the people. It's clearly not.
Well, I, again, I would ask that if you could come up with some reason why it's not to the benefit of the people of New Freedom, that you bring forward that information. But I, I haven't found anything that would dissuade me from thinking that this is a very good lease for the people of New Freedom.
Well, I did. I asked for a commercial person to come in, and we could have had that done by now, but we still don't have that done. I probably won't have it done in two years. And they'll probably do it again, so you're gonna, guys are gonna do what you're gonna do, I'm not.
Okay. All in favor? Vote call.
Aye.
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote as aye. Motion carried.
No vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You didn't ask for a no.
I just assumed.
Yeah, well, I guess, I supposed to ask out loud, I guess. I don't know.
Okay. Police commission budget.
I thought that I was no, right?
I'm sorry?
Thank you. Just checking to make sure he has him down for a no.
No, yeah.
Okay. The mayor and Erica have reviewed, and I assume your vote was yes to approve the police commission budget?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. I entertain a motion for New Freedom Borough to approve the police commission budget.
Make a motion that we approve the 2023 Southern York County Police Department budget.
Second that.
Okay. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yes. I, I mean, this is not set in stone. There could be a few minor changes because of not knowing what retirement figures are, but...
But my question is, can we, can we approve this then?
We're, we are approving this.
Can we approve this or not?
Your budget.
I think my, my question is this.
I just want to let you know that it might change a little bit.
I, I understand.
Do you not, are you saying they don't have the final workman's comp?
They do not have the final liability numbers.
It's just the final insurance numbers. It's, it's probably, I mean, it could actually come down a little bit.
All right, then my question is, if we approve this and something changes?
Is this a maximum budget or is it a...?
We, in our budget that we have approved, is, our budget is higher than this number, and it will remain higher until they give us the final numbers.
Then we are, it's not like we have to go back and change the budget.
Is that good enough for...
As long as the solicitor is okay with it, I'm...
Yeah, if it, if it's not gonna go up, it could.
The police commission is coming back, and they are gonna address this budget, and this is what they're going to approve.
I'm, I'm sorry?
The police commission, at the next meeting, is taking this up, and this is what they are approving at the next police commission meeting.
Without changes? There are any changes?
With or without changes?
With changes.
It's not up to me.
It could be, it could change because those figures...
They could move up or down, I guess.
Until...
Then what are you approving?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question.
All right, then, I'm withdrawing my, my motion.
I think you're probably gonna have a continuation meeting.
I'm gonna make a motion that we, that we table the police commission budget until we have the final numbers. I don't think that's gonna be, though. It might not be till, till March.
I don't understand. What, okay. Why, why isn't there just a dollar amount in here, and that's what's set? If there's fluctuations, then those members are billed out for those fluctuations throughout the year. Why is it coming down to three weeks before and... I mean, because in that, in that theory, this happens every year, though.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't need to.
Because they don't know what those last figures are gonna be.
So, you're...
For workman's, for workman's comp, for unemployment, for what the retirement, for...
We don't, we don't know those numbers. We don't exactly know those numbers in our budget. There could be increases that come in throughout the year, but that's a budget.
They're gonna pass it at this, but they may pass on any additional fees.
That's a better way to say it.
To each municipality.
That's fair.
Okay.
Is the $710,903 the budget number for New Freedom? Is that what you're gonna pay next?
Yes.
Maybe.
Yes. Yeah.
It is. That would give you something to approve, the budget with New Freedom Borough getting, paying 710,903.
Not to exceed.
Well, I, I don't know how you're gonna do that, because it could exceed.
I don't know how they keep kicking it down the road.
Yeah. It's, we do this every year.
That's the problem.
I, I honestly do think that what they need to do is approve a budget.
Kind of a maximum budget.
It's supposed to be down.
Yeah. We did approve the correct...
We, we approved the budget.
Numbers.
At your last meeting, you approved the budget.
Yes.
Yes. So, and, and all that you're doing is warning us that this might not be exactly right. It might be...
We approved...
And that's way more dollars. Just like our, our budget for, for salt this year was whatever, but based on what we actually use, it could be more.
We approved the member costs of 2171,982.
That's the bottom line.
Right. And our portion of it is 710,903. And we realize that there could be some changes if other numbers come in. So, could you, you want to modify your motion to approve the 710,903? And we all understand that budgets are budgets.
It could change.
Fair enough?
Sure.
Yes.
It'll slap at me.
Make a motion that we approve the New Freedom portion. Does it need to be worded that way?
Dollar amount?
Yeah, well, I will, but I'm just asking.
I, I would just say the total budget of two, whatever the number was, 2,100 and... $982, and then with New Freedom's portion being 710,903.
So, vote.
Still have a second?
Second. I second that.
Okay. All right. So, we have a motion to approve the police commission budget of 2,171,000 dollars, 171,982 dollars. New Freedom's portion for PPU's being 710,903 dollars. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't mean to throw a monkey wrench in the answer. Pose, my vote is aye.
You're not throwing wrench. I'm not finalizing this as a motion.
Yeah, it's every... All right. We should be able to zip through this, especially this stuff is just things we've already approved. So, consider approval of an ordinance setting tax rate for 2023. This is already in our current budget.
We need a mo, we don't need a motion.
Sure.
So, make, make a motion to the... What do you, I'm losing my spot here.
Business, eh?
Everybody has paper? Make a motion for for the approval of ordinance for the tax rate of 2023.
Motion?
Yeah, I see them. I read it. I don't know where it went.
Who's, who's that you're... Hold on.
Any discussion? Where, fourth whereas, as more fully stated in section...
Oh, yeah. I wrote something on there, not a hint.
Okay.
General miller just two mills and the fire taxes.
Point two A.
Two A.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cost? My vote is aye. Okay. Refuse. This is a resolution establishing a fee for collection of refuse and recycling within the borough of New Freedom, which we've already discussed. This is just to close the loop on this, so...
And this is also cleaning up the language that you mentioned before?
No.
This is just...
This is just the fee.
All right, just, okay. Make a motion for the approval of the resolution amending the fee for collection of refuse and recycling.
I second. Make a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. My vote is aye. Okay, this is a resolution for amending the fee for quarterly sewer. This was already discussed during budget.
Make a motion to approve the resolution amending the fee for quarterly sewer. It says rents on air, assuming rates.
It's, oh, yeah. Same thing.
For the quarterly sewer rent.
Motion?
Okay.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
How much for square footage? Just kidding.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Oh, my God, that...
My vote is aye. Okay, this is the this is the fee schedule. It's an awful lot of information. The only note that I had on it, I'm sorry, the motion first.
I'm going to approve the resolution adopting the various fees.
I have a motion and a second. My only comment is there's no non-refundable cleaning fee, but you said that was included in the in the rental for the community. We just wrote that in. Does that mean it's going up? It went up?
$25.
Okay. Any discuss, other discussion? Question, is that discussion?
Sure.
When we look at recreation areas, rec fee, 2,000 per dwelling unit or lot, does that mean for each apartment, that new apartment that they put in down there, it's $2,000? Or is, it is per unit, not the whole block?
No.
Relling, dwelling.
That's some nice rec fees coming in, yeah. Or...
Or...
Say that. Most of those were paid
already paid.
long ago. What you saw come in last year was for the 20 units, 10 above each.
What? Oh, it was? Okay.
Yeah.
I was just...
These park facility rentals just seem awful, awkward. Where are you at? Page that's, there's no page numbers. Because I can, you know, I go onto the...
Your attachment.
Oh, oh, oh.
Auditorium. I can, you know, 350 and 650. Well, I can go over, you know... and rent a pavilion with a kitchen for seventy five dollars.
You're outside, you don't have exclusive use, there's not.
But you're in the pavilion, don't you?
Parking.
Pavilion? You don't have exclusive use of it?
Well, yeah, but I'm saying for the entire, there can be other people there renting the same thing at the same time.
There's, you know, fifteen dollars for pavilion for the whole day, I just, it's really.
Well, this wasn't supposed to be a moneymaker, it's just really supposed to cover costs of repair.
Yeah, I didn't, not looking for a moneymaker, it was like you said, cost of fifteen dollars a day, I don't know how often that's rented, but I don't know how many repairs you're gonna get with that. Yeah.
How's it compare with the.
It's ton, twenty five bucks for.
Yeah. That gets pretty much where it is and she was very talented.
Yeah, it's basically you're paying an administrative fee for somebody to take the reservation and post it.
Any other discussion?
Do, I have to. The equipment in those buildings belongs to the Lions. Does that entitle them to use the equipment and not reimburse the Lions? Or that is no equipment unless they.
They, if they wanna use the equipment, they have to clear it up with the Lions.
Gotcha, that's all I wanna do now.
But they could remove those water heaters whenever they like, or actually.
I thought they're out, they're out, okay. They're unhooked.
They were.
Cause I know they said they had to take them out because of draining them. They're not hooked up, I knew that.
They're still there.
You want them out of the building?
They said they're gonna pull a permit.
Well, they said in April. They said in April before the car of the next year, cause they unhooked them for the electric.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. My vote is aye.
Is that on the, someone website, the individual fees?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought I saw someone, but not, someone like department and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Approval of the twenty twenty three budget?
Make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty three budget?
I'll second.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
This kind of same thing as the police, I mean, that's could change.
Yeah, well, it's true.
But the numbers, the numbers that you approved will not change, what will change are actual.
Or that.
We actually spend or don't.
That's really the best way to look at it, you know, there's difference between actuals and budget.
Yeah.
And they keep, they keep trying to get down to the nitty gritty on.
Oh, god damn it.
Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Oh, well.
Are there any discussions?
Sorry. I, I think, I thought I had a, uh, rec, okay. Under rec, I, I guess I don't know where all this money came from. If we're looking at fund balance, one one twenty twenty three sixty one thousand, when, at the rec meeting, that's not what the treasurer reports. Is there money in different fund?
You need to go down that column, down to assigned fund balance, forty four nine sixty, that is the total of the rec fees that's being held. That's not, that's for improvements to park facilities. So what's being reported is the, uh, general checking account balance. That sixty one includes the forty four, which is why it's being backed out, for your uncommitted fund balance at the bottom of eighteen thousand.
Okay. That makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, you share the whole, but, the whole balance, but then we break it out and make sure it's assigned properly.
And then expenditures for twenty twenty three, um, does that include the monies that we're putting in, that three, three dollars and fifty cents?
That hasn't been approved yet, so no, because then that's still in discussion.
Should we maybe do this after that or now?
Well, you can't, you gotta, this has to. And if, if that's the case, the recreation fund accept for the rec fees goes away, because it's being absorbed by that new entity.
Okay, very tough, well.
I did. But the, they still have, they still, that's a summary.
Yep.
It's on here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. My vote is aye. Okay. Approving the final payment, or, I'm sorry, approval, uh, cash payment number one from Liberty Restoration for the office roof replacement project, the amount of fifty four thousand dollars.
Make a motion to approve fifty four thousand dollars for roof replacement of the borough building.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
This is, this is payment number one of, is it three?
No more than three.
Yeah. Okay. Does, what would affect that, just the timing of their work?
Yeah, they, they have to get their payroll certifications in, um, and I, I can't see, they, they originally said two, I think it would probably be three.
Okay.
Doesn't probably be up to the end or something.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. My vote is aye. Consider authorizing the meeting schedule, accept motion.
Make a motion that we approve the advertising of the twenty twenty three meetings, uh, meeting schedule, excuse me.
Have a motion?
I'll second it.
Have a second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. My vote is aye.
Is the table? That's a lot.
Trouble is, when, when are, when are you planning on going up or, um?
Well, we.
Well, I can't grant.
I, I, you can't go for the grant until they.
Till it's approved.
Yeah. But I, I, I would probably, uh, but it's almost eleven o'clock.
Yeah.
This is going to take some time and it should.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. All right. Motion to table? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Approval of payment five, uh, for the public works renovation project. This is the last one?
No, this is, this is the revision. You had previously approved number five, however, they needed to go back and rework, we did not pay that, it was just reworking and cleaning up this, um, the next two.
Right, okay. Have a motion to approve payment number five.
Second. Was that the motion?
I thought Brian made the motion, I was just restating it.
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Hi, we have. One more motion, is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My vote is aye.
Uh, regarding, I'm jumping, regarding number six.
Go ahead.
I didn't say that you tabled that. We have some issues that need resolve for that.
Okay. Well, then it's not ready, then, um.
Make a motion that we table, uh, payment number six.
I'll second.
I'll second. Okay, table. All, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Nobody voted on the last one.
I don't think you, you need a second for table?
You didn't do that.
I don't think.
You didn't do it with the township thing.
I don't think you need a second.
For a table, no. All right, water grant for the common, for H O grant for the Commonwealth Financing Authority, this is a, this is a grant we've talked about before, right?
Yeah, this is, this is a grant for, this is a grant for phase one of the improvements at the wastewater treatment facility, um, and this is basically fifty percent, going after fifty percent of the total cost.
I heard the total cost is over three billion now? Is that right?
No, that was, that, no, that was for the water tower, the new water thing.
I thought Shrewsbury said it was more.
I don't think. I know three million, what, three million on the new water tower we talked about, didn't we, Tony?
It was two point one, right?
No, this, this would be half, so it's two point four.
Two point four.
Two, yeah, a little over two point four.
Still right now.
Oh.
I heard somebody over there say it was closer to three.
This is just submitting the grant.
So we have to, we have to pass it.
Yes, please.
I move we pass the resolutions supporting submission of the H two, H two O G. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. My vote is aye. Okay. So I, sir.
I, I, what did I miss? I reviewed the, um, the intergovernmental cooperation agreement, any like, want some changes to that, so I proposed it back to him on last month. Otherwise, it's been fairly quiet, um, and in, in February or March, I think it's March now, we'll probably have our municipal three oh, or two oh one program. Hopefully you guys won't get blocked out by the accident on the three again to attend, um, that event in, in March. So you'll look for some invitations after that.
Okay. Manager's report.
If he needs a mic, your mic will pull out.
Yeah.
I fixed it.
Everybody has a report in front of them with any questions?
CPR training for employees, did that include the, the, uh, blah, 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 the sewer plant?
Yes.
I forgot, a little over there on the country, was that all that roasting company, all that catered in, is it catered in, was that for that CPR there or was that?
Yes.
Who, who held that, who did that? Mike Garrett?
No.
Oh, Mike didn't do it, okay. Who did it, cause we're kinda looking for some, uh, do some other things.
It's, uh, Scott Fredericks?
You have his number, I did, I, give me that, please, I'll make.
Can you say what you did for the results for the cybersecurity assessment for the borough network?
What we did?
What did that entail, what did you, can we make decisions, can we change things?
Yeah, there will be different, uh, improvements that will be implemented. What was done is basically there was a third party that, uh, attempted to obtain access into, uh, into the borough server, into files, uh, through phishing emails to, directly to employees. Uh, and basically just an overall scan of the network. So there were some holes that were found and those holes are being fixed and working on implementing some different improvements throughout all the computers, throughout the server, um, throughout individual workstations and all, any acts, any device that accesses our network.
Does that have to do with your computer today?
No. No.
Do we know if any information was taken?
No, that's not the, that's not the, that's not the goal of the company, they're just like, if, if we were able to, here's some areas where you need some improvements.
Okay.
We already have.
They're testing.
I'm confused, was it a test or did somebody actually try to get in our system?
It was a test.
Okay.
White hat hackers, and they come in and try to access your system.
Yeah.
And they sign a confidentiality agreement, if they see it.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Um, already thanked Myra, I talked about community support, I did also want to.
It says request to purchase community events.
It's under. You have to revise. Okay, you have to revise the general. I would be proud to table that. What the, the Indian supply thing?
What is that?
There's opportunity from another municipality to purchase supplies to hold different community events, here in New Freedom, we work with recreation, working with the, the training, other community organizations, so anything from, um, anything from like kids games supplies, professional kid themed supplies, to, uh, steam tables, um.
So you're requesting to purchase that?
Yeah, yeah, I.
Okay.
Right.
This would actually be a huge thing for the borough, we have an opportunity, um, Spring Grove is not gonna be doing Smoke in the Grove anymore. Andy has volunteered to do Smoke in the Grove here.
I don't know what that is.
It's a barbecue contest, people come in, it brings people in from all over.
Sounds delicious.
It's just, yeah. It's a, it's a really neat thing, it would, it would be.
Breakfast in two hours.
I'm thinking about going straight to work.
It would be a great thing for the community, it would be a great thing for Trail Town, and it'd be, it would just, you know, and we could use, also use it with, working with N C R for the chili cookoff that we've been talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the equipment is, it's under ten thousand dollars, it's probably about eight thousand dollars. Uh, and Andy estimates that even if we decided that we didn't want it, we could probably sell it for more than what we were buying it for, so it's almost a no brainer.
My goal was to put something together today, but it crashed the computer, didn't exactly.
Where does it get stored?
Uh, we'd have to work out, I know the mention was that where you could store it, some of the.
What's that?
It's at the auditorium.
You wanna go that round, the idiot? I'm loaded to go, let's go.
Anyway, I, I think it's a really good idea. Do you think you need to move on it right away so that you can get it, or do you think it could wait until next month?
Yeah, I mean, again, I wanted to have something prepared that it, it didn't happen, um.
Not to exceed, do we do a not to exceed?
You can.
But I can't make.
What should I, eight?
Can I just get it a little bit clearer? It's equipment for five kids to do something for, I mean, what?
I can, I wanted.
Yeah, I know, it's, I'm sorry, um, you wanna wait, we could wait, but I'm just afraid it's gonna go away of.
Just tell me something.
Okay, we went to Smoke in the Grove, Smoke in the Grove would fill up Large Goodfellow Park. People come from all over the east coast and they come with barbecue pits and those smoke things and they, yeah, I know.
So is it just in Spring Grove and they come, or it's like all over the east coast and they go to different places?
No, no, it's in Spring Grove and they all come to Spring Grove, they spend money, it's a, you know, a tourist thing, they, they, it would increase, like Hampton Inn would run out rooms, um.
How long is it for, is it a weekend?
It's a weekend.
Weekend.
Yeah.
When does it help?
It's really, it would be, the one in Spring Grove was in July, yeah.
Would, would we wanna try to do it in July, since people are used to that?
That date would be best.
I'm sorry?
That date would be best, but it's really up to your community partners that make sure you have volunteers and things as well, so.
Okay, I got a question. Being we're doing this partnership with rec and all that, would they go in halves with us on this?
We're not there yet. We don't have the signed agreement yet, but I'm, I'm sure that they would probably.
It would be a good addition to, to any event that they.
Erica had a good idea? Come on, guys, come on. I have to say, we went last year and Andrew Schaefer is a rock star at Smoke in the Grove. So if we have a chance and him getting the stuff to do it here.
I'll, I'll make a motion, not to exceed nine thousand dollars.
Nine, can you do it for nine?
Again, I mean.
Hey, but I got a nine, you got a nine, you got a nine five.
It, I'm not sure I understand the mindset about them stopping it, but that's, that's their decision, their point.
The manager's cutting costs?
They focus this though.
I'm sorry. Uh, so I think nine thousand is a, a nice offer because they're not going to have to deal with selling everything on municipal, it's to one municipality to another one, so it's more, it's basically writing the check and going to pick everything up and you're moving on. Um, I, I think it's a, a good offer.
How soon, how soon will we have to take the equipment after, if they accept the offer? You don't have to drive it over here.
No, no. It's, it's stored under, there's no need to ha, have access to that space.
We can move Andy's strike out.
I have an not to exceed motion, nine thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
Nine thousand, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Taste test. Taste tester?
Thank you for considering that, and again, it didn't.
I think it'd be a really good thing for the community, and they're also, I think, can be arguing.
Trail Towns is super excited. Possibly.
All right, uh, Mr. Mayor? You have it, we passed the budget, this is, you've got all the information, the knowledge sheet. Um, I will, I'll try to find my sheet. Darn it, a synopsis, if you would like, of the last, here we go. Um, do, 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 Glen Rock, sex assault of a thirteen-year-old at the Runes, they did make an arrest. Uh, this happened on a Sunday, they made the arrest on a Monday. Um, we're negotiating for the new, with the new bargaining agreement. Um, I think that took place, sorry, you're on that, did that take place this past Thursday or this coming Thursday?
Uh, we met, we were missing a member. And, uh, I wonder who that was? And, uh, just, some, just general housekeeping sort of things, and we're waiting to hear when we're gonna meet again.
We do have provisional officer for, uh, uh, for a, uh, an op, for a new officer that we're replacing. Uh, we did, uh, give, the commission, the commission voted to give chief the ability to make lateral move, well, there, there are two people that are still, cause the other guy did ride alongs and then he went by.
You're, you're speaking of the two from before, two officers?
Yes, they went by, and now we have two other ones that were.
That we had originally interviewed.
Right, but we did give them the op, okay, to give offers for lateral transfers instead of starting at the bottom.
Out of your negotiations.
In other words, if you're a, we hire a sergeant, they get sergeant back.
I get you.
Okay, you make sense?
Yeah.
Detective vehicle, we could find nothing on Coast Stars. We had to, I think, put in two years in advance, you know what that's like? Two years in advance, uh, but we found a traversing Lancaster that had just come off lease, which they liked, they saw it, we authorized them to put ten percent down, uh, on that and purchase that for the detective, his car has a couple hundred thousand.
Hundred million thousand.
So, we're, um, we're good there. Um, Derek anxious to get the rest of that, uh, um, group completed, I'm sure you are too. Um, I don't know, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, they're participating in a grant with two other departments to help pay for data upgrades, like computers, cameras, digital reader, so forth. Uh, the two thousand twenty-three charger should arrive this April. Um, also, the motion was made to respond back to Glen Rock that they need to follow the process of the current I G A. Um, all treaty lightings went well. Um, and also, there was a Veterans Day event, a good event in Glen Rock with a barricade situation. Our Q R T T negotiation, uh, state was out, it was a several half-day event. Uh, the girlfriend, grandmother, and kids were all, uh, released okay, and they were able to get him the help he needed. I don't know.
I don't remember where that was.
Just Glen Rock.
But it was at Glen Rock.
Thank you. Uh, anyone have any questions on the, on the area report?
Wait, you have a lot of progress. You all should know that you just left for a work problem.
Oh, okay.
Uh, number two.
It's not good, it's work.
It's a well notification.
It's good. It's good.
I'm sorry.
The lead and copper and calcium. This is, was talked about back in April of twenty-two, that it was a problem then, and eight months later, it's still a problem. So I was just wondering, like, eight plus months, I guess, been going on, no resolution, what is the issue?
Still working to find, um, trying different things at the wells, um, still working on the best long-term solution, not Band-Aids.
Band-Aids on that, what, what is a long-term solution?
Arrow is still evaluating the best long-term solution at this point.
But we don't have a, a health problem. Yes, the system.
And we submitted application, replace the chlorine analyzer. Why is it chlorine at, at all of the system's entry points?
You want to work?
You're up.
No, she'll laugh.
I told her.
All right, so, so what these things are, are there, it's a unit that takes the first sample of water as we produce the water, and it raises the chlorine residual, just the same as what you're getting out at your specet. We have to keep a certain residual at that point. So what they are is, uh, the units that are on the walls right now, I think were purchased and installed in two thousand and ten. Parts are obsolete. Um, they're dated, they're, so this is just an upgrade.
Upgrade to what we have?
To what we have, and we have to have them because they report every so many minutes back to the computer, which then goes to report to the E P.
You might know, I, another thing, back in the treasures report, we purchased, I once, was it vinegar water?
Mm-hmm, vinegar, that is for cleaning, uh, parts in the well.
Parts in the well?
Yes, piping and stuff like that.
So where chlorine doesn't get to?
Oh, no, this is a, this is a.
Soft calcium buildup.
This is a soft calcium buildup from one of the processes that.
So is that back to the lead and copper creating the calcium issue?
Sorta kinda. We, we don't have a lead and copper issue. Um, our levels, we just got back from the last testing, are, are great, I mean, they're good. Testing before that was good, we're just in that.
Well, I guess, yeah, it says here, you corrected it, but now it's created a calcium.
Yes.
Issue.
Yes, and that's what Arrow is looking into as a long-term adjustment to get this all squared away.
Okay. And the Franklin Square Swell Project, I think, Kim, is that what you talked about several meeting, couple meetings back, about between two building something, and it was afraid a child was gonna drown?
No, that's the one on the, the Stormwater Swell, North Constitution Avenue, they're calling it the Franklin Square Swell.
Okay, so I thought it was the Franklin Square, okay.
Yeah, they're just, yeah, they're referring to that as one between Constitution and the apartment.
Okay.
Garry's and Russell.
Garry's and Russell.
Yeah.
And they incorporate survey data of the swell into a plan profile, that's where they're getting ready to submit, or you, you talked about. Okay.
About six months out.
And what is the Borough's digital permit application, should be revised to capture information?
That is when someone goes online and applies for a permit.
Okay.
So what we're making sure that we're doing there is with the new stormwater regulations, that we're capturing anyone who files an exemption, anyone who files a permit that needs stormwater, uh, improvements on their property, and that we're tracking that going forward so that we have record of, of those operation maintenance agreements, we have plan details, all in one centralized system that is tracked by parcel.
Do these permits ever go away?
Not these, these would be scanned into the system.
These would be scanned in. Is that only for water building kind of things, or all permits?
Um, eventually, it, we're kinda baby steps here, getting in that information, but eventually, yeah, you can scan in the permit into the G I S system, that would be recorded.
Would you scan, would you just start scanning that day, or would you, all the permits you have that in there, you put in that system? That have already been completed?
Normally, you, you would try to do some going back, um, but as time permits, you definitely wanna do the ones going forward, and then take a point in history and, and scan theirs up to date. That has not been decided, and anything would deal with stormwater that we're taking in now is going on the system.
And the Borough's Microsoft account to prop, probably holder each Borough property, where?
That is into our, um, the Microsoft three sixty-five on the admin side. Um, I can't remember the exact term that it's called, but basically, that will create the folder structure. So in our G I S system, there'll be separate links on each property, so you click on a property, it comes up with a link. That link takes you then into the stored data. And the reason we're doing that is because it's too expensive to store in G I S, where the cost is very minimal for Microsoft three sixty-five to have that storage capability.
So if you want to have the properties done, so you can go there and click on it, and it'll open up everything that they've applied to do?
Yep. And eventually, that will, again, baby steps, that'll go into code enforcement, that'll go under stormwater building permits, anything else that we are recording from that property.
All right, I would entertain a motion to continue.
You are at the end.
Yep. In or not?
Alls we have is this.
Water system?
Do you have an R M update?
Sorry? Sound like a woman. Think he sneezed.
This is an R M update.
Under the South Hill Report, or?
Under the warehouse, she has the name of this one? Oh, we skipped over?
Well, no, that was still part of engineering, so I, I thought you were done, but.
Yeah, I was just, just R M update, we can move on.
Yeah, they basically submitted their draft review back to the developer, um, and it's just staff review at this point. Um, and so there's been no formal application made by R M. So they're addressing those changes, they need to go back to Shrewsbury Township and work out the access point, uh, as well as, I think there's a wetland issue as well.
And we're still finishing up the rail trail crosswalk, there's still a good bit of work to do?
Yes, yeah, the, the holdup right now is the boring machine is a couple weeks out, so they're hoping to get that done by the end of the year, but it might push into January.
And sidewalks, can they complete them this time of the year, or do they have to wait?
They can complete them, yeah, they, Kinsley was made aware that they missed some areas that need to be concreted, so.
That's going across the railroad tracks, right? Where the, I brought it up last month, where it's all stone? Or asphalt or something?
There's a section that's between asphalt and concrete that's stone, that's getting fixed, and then they're above that, uh, by the train station, there's some concrete.
Okay, just, uh, that's, cause I saw that during the Christmas events, and people were kinda ready to twist ankles in their stones. Okay, water system?
Was your alert for well one?
Oh, it's pipe one, came on today.
Oh.
Yep.
I was wondering, that's what you left for, I was gonna ask, so it came back on today.
Yep.
Questions? Waste water system?
I just had a question, why, why do you need to clean tanks with chlorine? There, it was a say, the two chlorine contact tanks were swacked, and the south tank was clean. But the water has chlorine in it, why do you need to clean it?
Well, you still get, I mean, you still get a little bit of, a little bit of solids that are gonna drop out, sometimes you get some accumulation of algae. So the chlorine is added, those contact tanks are basically a, um, the water moves through different baffles and things, so it has time to probably disinfect before it goes to the outfall. So there's some, there's some velocity changes in that water.
It's like a settling tank, you got a few solids left or something, that over a period of time, it'll, you know, every tree will play dead.
And how did the annual testing go, the samples? It says they participate with D E P?
There was no, um, due for any violations.
And did D E P bring it up to have this participation, or how come they were?
They're always. It's an annual, right? Yeah, it's part of, it's.
What's it, annual?
Part of the annual, part of, or part of the, uh, N D S.
And how'd your kickoff go with our campaign?
Uh, went very well, we had, went over a couple, uh, timeline things, and actually, that was in, um, went over a couple expectations, and went through a preliminary schedule. At this point, uh, pending any, any setbacks, we should have a set of specification and plans by August of twenty-three. Now, that does not include any permits that we'll need from, uh, federal or state, because this is working in a floodplain, so we need a joint permit, just like the stormwater. Uh, so it will require additional permits from D E P.
We have to get permits from, um, Alred?
I asked that question, I have not received a response.
So any code enforcement?
Yeah, one question, did you get a response to the last one there at twenty-three John Randolph yet?
We have not.
I can hear it from my house. We had an additional complaint last week about that.
How many do they have?
I believe there's three.
There's a rooster there, that's the one in the year.
I'll talk to you about that, have roosters. You can't have roosters in the Borough, can you?
Can't have, can't have. Get a damn roof, he, he has to have an acre in his lap.
We have to have an acre.
Going backwards, the interior spread out for the leasing office, is that Franklin's leasing office?
That, uh, Burton.
Or, um, yeah, Burton.
It is, yes.
And did he, his trucks moved to storage yet? Have you bought property for him?
Um, I was not out recently to look, I know he did stop in and say that he was purchasing additional property, he needed, uh, some time to get a driveway installed to relocate those, so he could get access to the property.
Are they still up in the street, I mean, in the driveway?
They're off the street, yes.
Is there an update, Melissa queries, name and address?
Well, the violation occurs at.
Row yard, yeah. I think you're gonna include the title, right?
Whether it's filed against.
Right, 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 yeah, I know. I guess, uh, actually, we have to do one.
Yeah, we'll.
If we hold out long enough, we can make a Borough meeting last into tomorrow, and it'll be the first, first Borough to ever do that.
Oh, that's not.
That's not that far. How long we make it?
We don't have much to do.
Target.
You have a cop, do that.
Sleep at Public Works?
Oh.
There you go.
We don't have a bunker.
What do you mean?
Well, we just.
You can't sleep there.
We just.
It's half a million dollar, you got a bunker.
It's coming, it's coming.
Any questions on subdivision and land development?
Um, is it anything different on there than what's reported?
It'll be there next month, same as just, uh, next month.
New Freedom Rat?
New Freedom Rec.
I'll go over basically the highlights, and I know we'll, we'll be going back over it on the next meeting, with the intergovernmental cooperation for New Freedom Borough and Shrewsbury Township. One of the, the big items, I don't know, we'll catch it from now. Actually, it was in the bylaws. So, the way it was originally worded, it would have been three members from New Freedom, three members from Shrewsbury. Since they have four current members, they want to keep with four members, and the way the bylaws were written, it would be one elected official from each municipality, so that would make it a total of five members. Five from New Freedom, five from Shrewsbury Township. And the other change was.
That was a requested change.
That was a request.
The request.
Are you able to do that?
You have to back to them and pay us, right?
I don't.
Going from what, three to five?
I don't know, I, we'll, I think we should stick to the report and discuss.
Okay. We'll, does anybody have any other questions?
No, I didn't, I didn't cut, I didn't cover that, I just don't think we should debate it.
Oh, okay. They also requested, I just wish, wish things again. Basically, keeping with the same meeting schedule that they have. I believe that was the last major change. Sorry. Anybody have any other questions about anything else going to the actual minutes program?
We have a flat fee of two hundred dollars that was supposed to be decided on by the end of this year. Are we continuing with that two hundred?
No, not according to the, um, the new, what do you call it, between Shrewsbury and.
You haven't covered one.
Yeah, that too. No, well.
I think, I think we continue with the flat rate until we come up with something different for the.
Well, the new one says nobody gets charged any.
So that's what you're waiting for, when that gets approved and then we charge nothing, or they won't be there anymore?
They'll still be there.
They'll, they'll, the rec commission will still be an entity every month here?
No. They can, they're gonna, they can meet here, yes, it'll just be the southern.
With three and three, or five and five.
Right, whatever's, yeah.
So we'll keep it two hundred dollars a month until further notice. I make a motion for that.
A motion that we need to, did we have that in the fee schedule or anything?
No, it's basically used in the community center by the recreation for their.
For a flat fee.
For the monthly.
Right. I have a motion to keep rec's fee for the community center at two hundred dollars according into twenty twenty-three.
Oh, second.
Motion of the second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All ahs, my brothers. Do you have anything on the MS? I mean, I, I see they are gonna go pick up the truck.
Yeah, they, they are gonna pick up the truck.
What truck?
I don't need to get into it.
The fire truck, the chase truck, tank.
No, the, the new tanker. If you go on their, go on their Facebook page, you'll see it, they're flying out to Wisconsin to check it out, just get running through its paces. Then they'll be bringing it back in January, nice looking truck, lights, looking outfit, they pick, custom pick their colors. No, big difference from what it is now.
Is this the demo that they bought?
No, this may order, this is.
Brand new. What is the demo that they talked about buying, or I believe it was a demo, something? No demo truck, or?
Did they ever mention something about a used truck?
All the chase trucks?
That's a chase truck.
I remember a chase truck, but I remember the word demo.
That was a chase truck. And I did remind them that that thirteen thousand that we have earmarked is, that they need to get on the stick and get over to Shrewsbury Borough, Shrewsbury Township for matching funds to that. But that is not just a gift, that's contingent upon them, so they're getting on the stick on that. Really nothing else, they're very appreciative of everything we've done in the last year, and, um, infrastructure, we've already talked about, um.
Here, Ron.
Night run, sorry. Infrastructure, we've already talked about, the kickoff meeting for sewage treatment, we talked about crosswalks, is there anything else? Pickleball court installation is under Margit DeFella, park, personnel, we don't really have anything. Public safety? Everybody stays there.
Sasquas Centennial.
Now, I don't really have too much that I can put in this, this month, but I have, but I can say that I am in contact with the, with the railroad, and we're finalizing what they're gonna do to take part in the Sasquas Centennial, I'm gonna have that meeting after Christmas.
Bernal, Jenny Newbauer is here, and she's been patiently waiting, I think, and she wants to set up a meeting with you about the kickoff, the first event.
Yeah, yes, oh, she's at the meeting now, oh, I didn't know she was coming tonight.
Yeah.
I had just talked to her on.
She, he was, he was sick.
Yeah, I talked to her earlier today.
Okay, alright, so you're gonna set that up with her then?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna get that set up, so I can get her, get her in, in business.
Okay, sounds good.
Also, I'm gonna have another meeting with rec council, so they're gonna, we're gonna finalize some dates in that there.
Okay.
That should be, that'll be before our next meeting, so I'll be able to show you a little better.
Yeah.
What's going on with the rec council, to finalize?
Yeah, to pray, to work for.
Just the prayer.
Just the prayer, yeah.
Yeah, that and that, and that concert in the park too, that they're, we're working on that too.
Alright, yeah, broadback, with that broadback, yeah, they're gonna try to get them.
When can we start growing our beards?
That's mine.
Yeah, I'm not good with beards, so.
I, I, I'm, I'm ahead of the curve, you know.
Okay. Alright, chamber audio and visual?
I have asked for him to kick out that part of the contract, and I have not heard. We've really gotta get together, the three of us again, do we wanna wait until right after the first of the year, Dave?
You'll have, you'll have to do it before, because about the third of the year, I'm gonna be at, in Maryland, a house guest for some special treatments that they do in Europe.
Well, maybe Dave and I can do it, and we'll fill you in.
Well, I'd like to do that.
It's not gonna be anything that you're gonna really have to.
I mean, you know.
I've got the, I've got the amounts, all I have to do is get him to get.
I, I don't have to, I, I don't have to be there until the fifth of January, so maybe we can kind of like, I, I'd like to be part of it, I'd like to see what's going on.
Well, we'll see if we can do something with holidays and stuff.
It'll give me something to think about, whether.
I may be in Florida.
Oh, okay, well, then you ought to what you wanna do.
With my daughter, driving her back from being up here.
Maybe I want, we returning, but this isn't.
Yeah, my.
It's pretty tough, it's a pretty tough thing.
Correspondence differently, already had an executive.
I had a public comment.
Okay.
I want to thank these two gentlemen for fixing the pressure at the, at W.
Thank you.
That's very nice.
We hope it doesn't happen again.
Would you have to do a restrictor though?
No, the, the water meter was dirty from the, the water improvement.
Oh, wow.
So he, we took it, took it apart, cleaned it out.
I'm guessing from when they did the water meter project, had they just gotten the line.
Yeah, we had speak about North Constitution, had they, um, they put that, am I right, is it a restrictor valve?
No, 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 no.
The water meter south.
Oh, water meter south was very hell.
Any other public comment? Guess what? Made it before midnight. I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, we all turn into pumpkins.
Andrew, did you, across the street, I was always thinking about the people. There's so many people there, and of course, in the process, I had a few guys, unfortunately, they dug up about ten trees, eight feet tall, was, did you all do that?
Yeah, I love.
They finally cleaned up the yard.
Okay.
They've been at it for three days.
Oh, good.
In the process, we had discussed.
I know. Well, I'm, I'm as far as.
But I gave it.
Oh.
Merry Christmas.
That actually, that was accurate now.
It's snow this week, babe.
Huh?
The trading debt.
Probably get a rain, there's a storm coming across, I'm gonna, I don't, I think it's supposed to go to the south, I guess.
When I saw it, it was gonna be, go to the south, but there's enough.
You have resolution?
It's Russ's saying, yeah.
Yeah, what's wrong?
You wanna do it tonight, you're gonna have to do it. Kim wants to go tomorrow, some other time.
You wanna do them?
Yeah, they know when it's cold.
Kim, Kim wants to.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Let's go.
Does it have to be done tonight? Alright, Kim. Yeah, he said we can do it later.
I don't care.
Well, let me, let me put everything together, 'cause I don't even.
Yeah, that's fine.
Congratulations.
Stop in tomorrow, like.